I'll call the meeting to order. And this is Open Space Committee, February 3rd. And I'll call the meeting to order at 4:37. Did we have any public audience today? I didn't see anything come through. No, okay.
I'm not aware of.
All right. Approval of the minutes. Was there any feedback on the minutes from our meeting on December 2nd? Okay.
I ask they be approved.
Okay, that's a motion. Marjorie, do you second it?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries. The PA 490 referral to the open space work group. Can I give my layman's explanation of what PA 490 is all about? I'm not necessarily doing it for this group, but more for anybody who would be watching this on TV. The Board of Selectmen at our last meeting had a discussion about putting more guidelines and structure around PA 490 as it relates to what qualifies as open space. So PA 490 allows property owners who qualify, who have either forests or open space or farmland, to have a very different tax rate than they would if they didn't have that designation. And the Board of Selectmen is asking a subset of this group to develop a policy and guidelines around what qualifies as open space should someone want the PA 490 designation for that reason. Staff could do a much better job explaining what that is, but I hope that they somewhat did it justice. Anything you would add? Tom or Maria?
I have a quick comment and question. Just to... In your comments just now, did I hear you say that about the amount of acreage required for the 490 tax relief?
So this, I didn't mention anything specific about what would qualify.
Okay.
Just that this, that a subset of this group, a working group, would develop a proposal to provide structure.
Okay, thank you.
Maria, anything you would add?
Sure, just a little bit of background in terms of perhaps by now. But we, as many of you know, we have a relatively new assessor who, in doing her due diligence, was looking for our guidelines or criteria for properties that should qualify under PA 490. We do currently have around a dozen or so properties that have that designation on some land. And she had a really difficult time finding any criteria. In fact, the documentation that we did find dated all the way back to 1974. So it was quite, it was quite old. And so we were really grateful Mike brought the, this issue to the attention of the Planning Commission, that we didn't have anything more recent. And we're just kind of seeking some guidance and feedback. And also reviewing this with the Board of Selectmen. We thought that the work group that's been working on all the various policies around open space could be really helpful to Francine in particular, our assessor, and working closely with her and Mike and Tom to really kind of develop a draft set of criteria for properties that could qualify under PA 490. And this isn't something that's urgent. We would love to get it accomplished this calendar year. So it gives us some time, I think, to work on some of the other policies that the work group is currently working on and tackle this maybe a little bit later in the spring. I don't know, Bill or Tom, do you guys have anything you'd like to add?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, just the, the lack of, the lack of a definition is what's, what's muddying the waters. So, well, the Planning Commission didn't feel it was our place to define or, you know, make any criteria. So that's why we kind of sent it back without a true ruling or anything.
Does staff have any... Is there any other guidance from other towns? Is staff aware of those? You know, what other towns are doing?
I'm aware from previous work with PA 490 in Windsor. But it was mainly from an agricultural standpoint. I hadn't dealt with it much within the open space, which I think is our focus on the criteria that we're looking at here, is the breakpoint where a sizable piece of land actually becomes worthwhile for a tax relief. But I think our definition of open space should be worked on to fit that PA 490. I think agriculture is pretty straightforward.
Susan Messina, who's not here, did share with us by email, or at least a subset of this group, that she had either a reference or a framework that she had access to that could serve as a starting place to.
A point of information, just a question. In your, in your material that you sent us, this item, you had like a little list of, I would call it an inventory, and it was dated 2016 off of the grand list. Did you notice that? Is that the correct date? Is that the... Do you know what I'm talking about? I don't have access to look at the document. These are my notes. And you have like a little list, an inventory of land that is presently, taxpayers that are presently given this relief. And it was dated 2016 off the grand list. And I was just curious if that was a correct date or is that the most recent information we have?
I'm not seeing what Helen's looking at.
She's looking at the right-hand side of Mike Gliddon's memo. Under PA 490 program, it gives a quick synopsis of land that we have.
Oh, right, yeah. We, Helen, we could double check on that, but I don't believe that the properties have changed since then. There's been, like I said, about 12 properties that I'm aware of since I started looking at this issue with Francine. We could verify, but I don't think that number has changed.
Okay.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, Helen.
That was just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so I don't think there's any action on this item. It's more for awareness and, you know, assuming there's general, general support, we can take this up as a work group. Great. All right, so we've got a couple of updates on the policies work group, starting with the agricultural lease, RFP.
Who would you like to present?
Yeah, please, Marjorie, go for it. We can fill in.
Well, we've been working on the RFP and then we did submit it to town staff and they did refine it and put in a few things. I think we looked at the last work group and we were quite happy with it. I think there was one, there were a couple of little additions. We wanted to make sure that it was a five-year rolling lease. I think that's been updated. Otherwise, we were, we were happy with it. I know Susan had some questions about what was appropriate or didn't want to be too burdensome for the farmers, but we based the RFP on some of the other towns' agricultural RFPs. And so I think, I think it's ready to go. Do we have farmers already interested in filling out the application, filling out the RFP? I think.
I think I've only had one inquiry so far. I don't know if Maria's had more, but I've had one inquiry. And I believe there's one parcel that will be opening up.
Yeah, and we haven't issued it formally on the town's website or some of the other places that we would typically post. But I do think we're really close to having a final document ready. So Melissa, our deputy town manager, was also reviewing the RFP for some of the insurance requirements. Reviewed that with our insurance carrier. So we just actually got a few more updates today from them that actually weren't part of the packet. So we'll make sure that, to include those edits. And then I think there's just one more small section I probably need to work with Tom and Marjorie on, just to fill in a little bit more information. But I'm really optimistic that it should be ready to, to be released very, very soon.
And I've worked with Mike with some possible naming of the parcels to get these things a little more ironed out so that we are aware and we can label the parcels in the field for identification. If farmers would like to look at the properties prior to signing into a lease, they'll know exactly where they are and what their boundaries are.
I saw in Susan's notes that she wasn't able to reach out to farmers. This one farmer that did come forward already, was this someone that's used, did in the past? Is this someone brand new to...? I'm just curious how they found out about it.
No, I think Susan was submitting, especially with the next session, to see whether the things that we were asking the farmers to do, the information divided, whether that would be burdensome. But they, you know, we discussed in the work group, a lot of these things like soil tests are pretty standard if you're a farmer. That's, you're going to want to know what your soil was doing. And one of the requirements for the town is to make sure that our soils are not, are improved rather than degraded by the farming. So there's a certain level of tasks that the farmer's required to do, but I don't think it's anything that a farmer would not be able to do or be interested in doing. But again, we didn't get any farmers who took the time to review it. Something we could look at later.
And the one inquiry we did have is someone who is familiar to the area regionally. They're a few towns away and they're an organic farmer. That's the few details that I do have from them.
Okay.
Because I've, I know two gentlemen, part of an undergrad or graduate program, I did work on a farm. I didn't know if we needed to reach out to people for input. I could reach out to them. I was just curious.
I would think if you can get input from them, that would be great. We don't want, we don't want to be burdensome. On the other hand, we have, we have to protect the farmland that we do have and make sure it's best practices.
Yeah, I think that feedback would be phenomenal. Thank you, Tim.
Yep, and just, I know it's going to be distracting, but this is the little one. This is our newest addition. This is Bryce. He's a, he's a vegetable. He's doing great.
I did want to, you know, say, Tim, that one of the few silver linings of COVID is that, you know, you would otherwise be sort of behind a table with, with everybody as opposed to with your family. You're definitely in a much better place.
Yeah, we, yeah, and I, you know, it's, it's great. I'll take it.
Well, you know what? You seem to be having the most fun at this meeting of any of us. You know, if you've got to go change a diaper and make me feel better about the fact I'm just sitting here listening and you have something to actually do.
We're, we're here for their future, so that's what we're doing.
There you go. Congratulations.
So to agricultural leases, this update is informational input, no action required today, right? Okay. Was there any other input or questions from the group? I know that Susan's question was around making sure that things weren't too burdensome for farmers. And I think a great next step would be putting this in front of some farmers to get that input. So thank you, Tim. All right, so moving on, the draft acquisition criteria policy.
I have a couple of questions whenever you're ready.
Oh.
Did you, was there anything, Marjorie, that you wanted to cover or should we just turn it over to Helen?
No, I just, I was just noticing that the, there were a couple of changes to the, the to the appendix document or the land use policy. I think this is the older version, but there, there were minor changes. I don't think there's quite as much yellow. So we'll make sure that that's the one that's red going forward, by the farmers going forward.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Marjorie. Helen, what questions did you have?
Oh, thank you. Let's see. Get the, read the criteria as a whole. And then look at bullet number nine under number, Roman numeral four, I believe. These are my notes again. Do you see that bullet number nine that says, "Provide sites for active recreation"? Am I quoting correctly?
Correct.
Okay, so my comment is that if this is going to be consistent and if you read the entirety of this document, the word "active" doesn't belong. It doesn't coordinate, doesn't fit. And I question why it's in there. Even if, for instance, I think I'm about in the first paragraph, it expressly says, "Preserved in the current state." That in itself would, would preclude altering something for active recreation. What do you mean by active recreation? I think it is misleading.
Very good point.
Pardon?
That's a very good point. We had it in there and it was, you know, we put it in about a year ago. And we got more, more interested. We had it for, "Provide sites for active" and recreation wasn't in there. So I don't, I guess it depends on how you determine. I mean, is fishing an active recreation or a passive recreation? Canoeing, I don't know.
You know, when a town is looking for, for, let's say, to acquire land for their parks and recreation, that's what you do. You look at a piece of land for that reason. When you're looking at a piece of land for preservation and conservation, that doesn't fit. And if you, I read the entire document over and over and that's the only place where that word is mentioned. And I think it's inappropriate. I don't think it fits.
I think you're right, Helen. And there is no good, we have no definition of what active and passive recreation is in this document. So passive would certainly cover the uses for...
Isn't this from the POCD?
That's what I was about to say. I was wondering if the POCD loves recreational fields, which would be active, active, what did we say, active recreation into the open space totals?
I, I thought it was. I thought that's where this language, this language came from. And, and I see, I understand Helen's point, but there, there is, you know, our athletic fields are still considered, considered somewhat open space in town. And there's, there, the environmental impact of doing something other than those fields could be, could be much more, less conservation oriented than the practices we're taking care of on those fields right now. I would rather have a great, you know, if, if it's not going to be forests, I'd rather have a, a field, in some cases of an athletic field that's well taken care of versus a sports dome or something like that. Like it's what's in East Windsor.
I, so if the POCD is not being that, let's say, considered as a, an explanation, we shouldn't follow and do the same thing. I, I hold my, my thought, the, if you read the entire document, it just doesn't fit. It doesn't belong.
So Tom, a point of clarification. Is that language actually coming out of the 2017 POCD? I don't have the document in front of me. As the planning department would be, but I, I thought I recall seeing it in there. I could be wrong.
I know that when we were developing the, the POCD, you know, we, we didn't want to preclude what we called active parts, active activities on open space. You know, we consider hiking, hiking or, you know, maybe fishing and then things like that as active. We didn't have in mind turning every open space into playing fields.
And I don't think that's what, that's what this says.
Right.
I don't think any, that's anybody's intent, but I think you do have to provide for the recreational needs of the community in some shape, way, shape or form as, as we are now and as we will be in the future. It's not, it's not necessarily, again, building a, building a motorcycle track or anything. But, you know, there are, there is some, you know, light use of open space for athletic fields in town now or like Meadow Pond Park, for instance.
So Helen, Helen.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Helen, I'm just curious to know why you feel that that doesn't fit in the context of open space?
Because I've never considered walking and hiking, let's say, an active activity. It is a passive activity. In other words, you're not altering the, the earth in order to create, let's say, an active, like a field, you know, a playing field or a playground or whatever. This is criteria for acquisition. Read the first paragraph, read the first paragraph for me. And see what it says. Under...
Are you talking to me, Helen? I don't have that document open right now.
The opening paragraph to the criteria. The short paragraph. It sets the tone.
So it says, "Land which is protected from development and preserved in its current..."
You go slowly, please, Marjorie.
It says, "Land that is considered, is protected from development and preserved in its current state."
Okay.
So it does say passive recreation, the hiking trails and low-impact activities. So, so it, it does call out in the first paragraph, passive recreation, then does specify it. We don't really have a definition for what constitutes active.
Yeah.
And it, and it is not called out in the first paragraph.
And I think in the...
Maybe it needs to be qualified, Marjorie. What do you think?
I think so.
I think in reviewing the POC, in reviewing the POCD, we might get a little more clarity because there is some goals in there that do specify some community, community character enhancement of the quality of life. There's some wonky language in there, but there's something I think we should probably review the POCD on what the open space goal is. So that it kind of makes sure that we even that out and iron that situation out. Maybe because it is in there.
Yeah, that, that would be great. And just something that I wanted to add. I'll probably have some additional thoughts that I'll try to send along in the next few weeks. But in the opening paragraph where, you know, it currently says is drafted, that it would be essentially left in its current state, I think that we probably want to give a little bit of thought to that wording in the sense that, you know, what if we want to put in a walking trail on the property? Or what if perhaps we want to put in a canoe or kayak launch off of a property? I think as...
What was that last one, excuse me?
For a kayak or canoe launch, perhaps, you know, off of a property. I think that the way that that first paragraph is worded, either without explanation that things like that would be permissible or without changing that wording, I think we might find ourselves in a difficult position to make any changes to the property. But again, I think that most of us would probably think something like a walking trail or maybe like a kayak launch in certain circumstances would be appropriate. So I think that's something we should probably maybe vet further for, for the draft policy.
Yeah, so I think it would just, I respectfully request that we find a way to qualify that or to identify in some way what that, what that is referring to.
And looking further down in the next paragraph, they do cite the statute 12107B. And under number five is to enhance public recreation opportunities. So that would seem to be a little bit more inclusive. So, yeah, our work's needed more.
If we think about a not-so-theoretical example, which is the, you know, the possible Meadowwood acquisition. I mean, we've been talking about one of the possible uses of the 24 acres that the town would have unrestricted access to, could be active, you know, ball fields, which is, as I'm understanding in this conversation, would be defined as active recreation?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought of that. I, Eric, I thought of that. And to me, when you come to an application such as Meadowwood, Meadow, yes, is that it? Meadowwood.
Yeah, Meadowwood.
Thank you. And you have that stated in there specifically. That makes it the exception. That's fine. You're due diligence, you've made that the exception, and it is to be accepted. And that's the way it goes forward. I'm talking about a policy, which we have to say, how many people, how many agencies, how many groups are going to be looking at it? And I, I just don't think that that needs to be in there. Or if it is to stay in there, that bullet is to stay in there written as it is. I request that it be qualified in some way. It's a policy.
No, Eric, I appreciate your comment because I don't want to remove the word "active" entirely. And exactly, I think Meadowwood's the perfect example and why Helen's right. We have identified already that there's a certain portion of that that we, we perhaps would designate for fields. I think of something that's still kind of ongoing about access to the river. It may be a new location where we might want to put a dock or things that someone might accuse us of saying is active recreation. It's not passive anymore. I just think if we need to define it better, that's great, but the word "active" needs to stay in there. It, it's important when we're acquiring open space.
You know, what, what would you consider putting a qualifier that, such as, that gives an opportunity to, you know, to even widen it? Suppose you come across another piece of property down the road in the future and you want to put, put something in there. You know, just qualify it.
Can I give a, a non-open space example? You know, whenever I talk about how we, we want to support economic development, I don't mean unhampered economic development. I mean businesses that are going to fit with the, the quality of our community and enhance the lives of our residents and not pollute. I mean, that's what I think most people are talking about. Is there a way we could clarify what we mean here when we talk about active recreation? I'm not talking about like dirt bike paths.
I understand. I just wondered if we could explore this and just find some way to qualify it to suggest what we're meaning rather than leaving it cold and, and open to taxation.
So I'm not, Eric, I'm not quite sure who, who's responsible for drafting this, but I don't think Helen's far off from, you know, we don't contemplate active motorized use of ATVs and, you know, snowmobiles and ATZ, ATV, you know, other vehicles. So the, the point's well taken, which is we, we don't want to maybe just leave it open-ended, but if someone could come up with a more defining role, I just think the word "active" still needs to stay in.
I will agree with that, as long as we can find, explore the opportunity to qualify it.
Okay, I, I'm fine with that. I'm trying to think of ideas right now on the fly, but perhaps I should leave that to people more qualified. Yeah, I appreciate the conversation and I, I think we, we have, there's some consensus here, as long as we can come up with the right wording to qualify it appropriately.
No, I agree, Eric. I think there is a general consensus here. Maybe as a point of clarification, you know, who, who would propose language other than the, the members of this committee? Or is there, are there particular staff members that would do that?
Thank you.
I could see you took yourself off of mute.
I mean, I could definitely review that in our department and review the POCD and try to get some better clarification. I know that this comes up a lot of time with grant funding and stuff that they want passive, not active. And there's definitions of what they define as active versus passive. And I could even reach out to some of the, some of the, someone like Honor to see what she typically uses as a passive definition versus an active definition. Just, just to try to get some kind of regional consensus on what that definition is in order to try to narrow that down. And then if we do want to make it so it's not open-ended, as you say, for motorized activities and such, hopefully you'll have a more clarified definition that could follow.
Yeah, I mean, if I'm just, thank you, Tom. If I'm just brainstorming off the cuff, I would say, you know, active recreation that doesn't lead to excessive noise or a degradation of quality of life for neighbors or pollution. But I, I don't know how. I mean, those are just initial...
I think Tom's comment about motorized activity is, is great language because then it's, it's encompassing and setting the standard for, I don't care whether it's a snowmobile, a motorcycle or an ATV, it's not happening. My, my thinking is you just don't know what active recreation could mean in 40 years from now. You don't know with, with what, what things will look like, what trends, you know, the community will be interested in at that point. And I just feel like, you know, you don't want to narrow it down too much. I think we all, in our heads, know what we're, what we're looking for when we assess these open space properties. You know, when we're checking off the boxes for what things, how these things meet, meet the needs in the list here. And what would be, look, what would we be looking for? What would be a good fit, you know, when it's a property located near a neighborhood or near a school or, or that kind of thing? I just, you don't want to be too, too restrictive because you don't, you just don't know what we're all going to be doing in 25, 30, 40, 50 years. And why handcuff yourself at this point?
Well, I hope that this kind of a policy would get a review far, far sooner than 30 or 40 years.
And that's also a reason to maybe rely on something that we can put in the POCD that does get reviewed every 10 years or so. that does get reviewed every 10 years or so, which is, you know, something that, you know, as referred to by our P O C D adopted 2017. And that way, you know, it can be something that is reviewed on a more regular basis and that is more of a living document that gets changed more often.
Great idea.
I'm not sure I heard that. Do I understand, just, you don't have to repeat everything. Does, do I understand that this then will be reviewed and possibly given some alteration effect or not?
Yes, we'll be reviewing it and trying to narrow it down.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And Eric, if you have an opportu, time for me now, I have one more, one more.
Of course, Helen.
Is that okay?
Of course.
Okay. All right. Where the 15 bullets are under Roman numeral four? Okay. This is a policy. This is also, in the old days, we used a rating sheet. In other words, what I'm trying to suggest here is that this is going to be used to determine if a piece of land fits philosophically into this document, you know, the items in this document. I'm wondering if that particular 15 might be perceived at any point in time by anyone that it might be giving a preference of value. So in order to make it be each bullet be valued equally, in other words, no one of these bullets should be, let's say, considered less than any other. They are equal. So there is a sentence right before the bullets begin. Could you read it out loud and see if at the, I think there is a colon at the end of that sentence and see if we can put a qualifier there stating that these bullets do not suggest a preference by the way they're listed?
Oh, I see what you're saying, Helen. So it could be as simple as the following will be considered in no particular order?
Just a few words, just a, some, to be sure that they are used equally in value.
Yeah. Helen, to that point, I put a, a list of people who qualify in phase one B of the vaccine. And I put teachers at the end of the list and I got accused of ignoring teachers, even though teachers were just part of the list, but they, they happened to be last on the list. And I think your point is well taken.
Okay. So how do you, don't you think that would be the appropriate place to make an, an adjustment? Where that colon is?
That makes sense to me if it makes sense to the group.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Helen, thank you. Did you have any other thoughts or recommendations?
Nope.
What about from any other members?
On this policy, no. I, I did have a question under the other category, Eric.
Yes, there's nothing more to discuss here. Go ahead, Dave.
Just looking for an update regarding the negotiations regarding the Antonio property and the bordering open space.
Maria, is that an update you can give?
Sure. Yes. The Board of Selectmen, I believe at the second meeting in November authorized a purchase and sale agreement for the disposition of approximately just under an acre of land on Holcombe Street and then acquiring an easement for the bike path, essentially in front of the Oldwell property. And the purchase and sale agreement was just executed about a week or so ago. And our attorney is in the process of working through the closing checklist. And closing will probably happen in March sometime.
Great. Thanks, Maria.
And Tom and Maria and Eric, Tom and Maria, all three of you. Again, we appreciate your efforts. I know there was a little delay here, but to park and rec, we think that the agreement in total is really important to our recreation development. Thank you for your efforts.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think it's a good, a good conclusion, but how about the finance of, the finances of it? Is that something you can share?
Uh, yes. Yeah. And that was in the packet on November. So that is public information now. And based on the appraisals that came in for the various parcels, let's see, the disposition sale price was about $6,000. The acquisition of the easement, in particular because it was commercial frontage, the Antonius had agreed to an amount lower than the appraised value. And I'm sorry, I just don't have that number off the top of my head, but it was around $52,000 plus, plus or minus.
And that comes out of money that was set aside for the bike path project?
Yes, that's, yeah, that's correct. So we had largely grant funding for that project and there was a, a smaller local match many years ago that had been appropriated for that particular leg of, of the bike path. So acquisition of the easement essentially didn't cause us an overrun in, in the budget.
Great. Good work.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. Is there any other business anyone wanted to raise? Okay. Well, I wish everyone, I can't believe it is February already, but we're going to get through this winter and it's good to see everybody.
Good to see everyone. Be well, be safe.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Bye.
Bye. Bye, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Thanks, Ian.
Thanks, everybody.